Customer's bill should be included on this report. So that's our first objective, is to ensure that it is included, everything is included. Secondly, the biggest objective is, are the territorial boundaries and are the provisioning that they're using for all residents within the village, are they correct? And historically, I can tell you, any firm, any vendor that's using zip codes is totally wrong. Because as we know, a village could have multiple zip codes. It could have a zip code that pertains to a joining village because they don't have their own postal office, and we found that. So they have to be using a tax map, or something very similar. So, two objectives: is all revenue included? Are the territorial boundaries correct? Sounds easy, but it's not. Now, the audit period for the grocery receipts tax, we are permitted by tax law to go back three years, so we would be looking here at 2010 through 2012. However, there are two exceptions to that law. We can go back further under two circumstances. If a vendor has never filed a return, we can go back to the first day that they started doing business within the village. And I've had some instances, several instances, where vendors have not filed a return. The second instance where we can go back further than three years, if they've underreported revenue by more than 25%, we can go back six years. I have one vendor who has done that, which I think will also apply here, so we can go back six years.
Three?
All right, so we can go back three. So, I'm saying typically, we could go back. All right. For the cable companies, we usually look at three years, but under the New York State contractual law, we could usually go back six. All right. So that's how we handle it. Now, the ease of this is very simple. I'm going to pass out what the required items are. Go over that. I promise not to take up too much of your time. I just want to explain this so you know how to stand up when you get the assignment. So the first thing we need are the executed agreements, and I'm going to get back to that in a little while. The second thing we need is the copy of the board of trustees' minutes authorizing going into the agreement. The third thing we need is a schedule of cash receipts by vendor for the past 12 months. And what we need that for is that we want to see who we're going to be ordering. We more or less know who we're going to be looking after, because they're more or less the same. We're not going to be looking at the guys that pay you a dollar every two or three months. We're going to be looking at the large ones, where we know there's potential. And what we do is, we will select one report that we will select for our order, and that's the report, this is an example, this report is for three months. We're going to ask the vendor for the backup for this report. If we ask them for three years worth of data, which we won't get anywhere, it'll take forever, and it... So we just ask for one report, show us the data, because if they made an error on this report, it's going to be the same on every report. Then we need a copy of your tax map, preferably in some sort of electronic file format, which will give us the ability to search that file and compare it to the vendor's records. And lastly, we need a copy of two things: the copy of franchise agreements for your cable companies, and then a schedule of the village's zip codes. Once we get that information, and it's very little that we get from the village, you can see, we work behind the scenes. What happens is, once we get the test report, we issue, the village will issue on their letterhead, a letter of agency. I'll give the village attorney a copy of potential one. And what the letter of agency, you guys want, why don't you do one, too? Why don't I do that? What the letter of agency does, it says, "My firm has contracted with the village, and you give me permission to deal with the vendor on your behalf." Without this letter of agency, no vendor will even speak to you. So what I do is, I send them an email, a letter of agency, copy of the test report, and then I wait for the data to come back. And then we do our work. And usually, this takes between three to six months. Usually. There are certain vendors that are slower than others. We work as fast as we can. We have an incentive to work as fast as we can, because we have a lot of assignments. We want to get this done. But sometimes, it's typically like to drag this on. I'll give you a perfect example. I had one vendor, which was on my first village. It took us 14 months to get to the point where we had a claim. And it wasn't because they were difficult, it was just they're so big and so time-consuming that you don't want them to bring this to their legal department. Because once it gets into the legal department, this thing can go on for six or seven years, and we don't want to do that. We want to treat this in a non-adversarial way. We know what the issues are, so we try to get them to agree to it in an amicable way. So, the benefits to this, I'll give you a typical example. There's one village in Long Island where I've collected approximately $51,000 for them on their back years. That is going to increase their revenue going forward by approximately $8,000 a year. So there's a twofold benefit here. You get money from the back years, and your revenue's going to go forward, increase going forward. Because when we finalize a claim with a vendor, we get them to agree that they're going to make these corrections, which we found, going forward. Lastly, two lastly things, before we get into the contract. Whether you hire me, or you hire another firm, this is an excellent way, and I'm sure the village attorney will agree, of ensuring that you are fulfilling your fiduciary responsibility. Because you're ensuring that all the revenue that you should be collecting has been collected, and you've taken steps to make any corrections. Now, the bad news, really not bad news. We enter into two contracts. One is for the grocery receipts taxes, that's covered under tax law. The second contract covers the cable and franchise agreement. And I'll leave those contracts with the village attorney. Both contracts are the same. Our fee is 45% of the prior years, whatever we've recovered in the prior years, and 25% of the incremental increase for the first two years. So if we find a vendor that has never filed a return, and say in the first year, they pay you $1,000, we would earn $250. That only lasts for the first two years. If you want any references, I can provide those. We do a business for about a year and a half, and have many satisfied clients.
When is the 45%?
The back years, that's the back years we cover.
There's no...
If I don't find anything, you don't owe me anything. There's no, it's a win-win for the villages, because I'm the guy who's taking the gamble. I'm investing time and effort, and I'm going to make the...
Is this the program that they run, payment and rule taxes?
No, this is covered under the grocery receipts tax law.
Okay.
And... You don't mind me asking a question?
No, no, we have to raise the bar. Because Liper is run by New York State, right? Is that the program?
No.
They're not?
No. They have to pay grocery receipts taxes.
And then one more, my last question.
No, you can ask as many as you want.
We've been fighting with Verizon and Liper for three years now?
Yeah.
And they both claim that because they're, well, Liper anyway, because they're a work for the state, that they're exempt from this law. Now, we've also been arguing with Towne Brook Haven, because somebody is collecting this money.
If you're in a cooperated village, and you have a grocery receipts tax law on your books, you should be getting...
Well, that's the thing, we were told. They thought we had money coming to us, that Towne Brook Haven had gotten, but then we received a letter back from, and they didn't support it. So we've been definitely on foot.
I can over that with the, if it's okay with you guys, and once we reach an agreement, even before, I can spend a few minutes with the village attorney and over that. I can tell you as an example, I have one village here on Long Island, where one vendor paid the town instead of village. And ironically, the town and the village have the same name, and we've been able to collect that money. Now it's up to the vendor to get it back.
That's where we honestly pick our own.
So you got it from the vendor, not from the town?
No, because the vendor never paid the village. And we got David from some judicial saying, "We haven't got it." They did pay the town, they showed us the cancelled checks, but it was there ever.
Well, we know we have Verizon here.
Right.
We know we have Liper here. We don't have Liper. We definitely have cable, we're looking at them right now. And does a water authority be...
Some water authorities, if it's a public water authority, it's not tax.
Suffolk County?
If it's a private company, like New Orleans Water, American Water, whatever they go under, yes, it is.
Suffolk County, not really. Suffolk County.
If it's a private company, they should be filing.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions?
No.
I'm going to leave these agreements with the village attorney. If you have any questions, you can try to contact me. One is, there's two copies of each. One is for the cable companies, and one is for the grocery receipts.
Okay. Do you want to thank everyone else? Do you need anything else? So now you're reaching them, and you give them that.
Yeah, I would definitely stay by the phone, because, definitely stay by the phone, because we've been arguing with people for three years, that money you do to us, and...
Well, I tell you, I went on New York Senator... I've been doing this for a year and a half. I'm an accountant by trade. Matter of fact, I started in public accounting 100 years ago. I went into private industry for almost 45 years. Required as a chief CFO of a major apparel company. And then I started this business, which I thought was just going to be a little hobby, just to keep my head working. And now it's grown to the fact that it's very busy. The story with this town and this village, when we were trying to get this money back to the village, the first alibi here from the vendor was, oh yeah, we spoke to the town, and the town told us, when they got the checks, they lost them over to the village and mailed them. That wasn't true. Then the second story we got was, oh yeah, the town got the check, deposited, because we got copies of the actual checks. And they said, "The town issued their old check back to the village."
Which also wasn't true.
Which also wasn't true.
Check's in the mail.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time, and definitely be in touch again.
Bye, now.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Stacy, right? Okay. This section 380-5, chapter 380?
That's, we're sending that down for public hearing on July 1st.
Okay. And basically, what is it?
We're changing the annual rental permit fee from a high annual to annual.
So I know it.
So you have to give that by rest of the year. Senate legislature.
Okay. Resolution authorizing the purchase of dental and vision insurance for the village employees. Do you see the follow-up?
We've got the... We've already... Oh, it's in here. There we go. Vision insurance, too.
We've got prices and everything?
Mm-hmm. It's all in there.
Got it.
Yeah, I have a question on the topic. The meeting, it would show that all village employees...
Only full-time.
Okay, but it doesn't, I don't believe that's spelled out.
Okay. It should read full-time.
Is that finished, or full-time?
Forty hours.
Is it forty hours or thirty times?
To be honest, I can write it in here. She sent the...
Okay. I thought that was in there.
I was just sent the petition, the intent.
We don't have that many full-time employees, so we won't, it's less than four.
You want to make that a resolution?
Okay, so you're going to make the resolution to accept the authorizing the purchase of dental and vision insurance for village employees? So...
That's it.
Full-time. You pay them?
Well, I...
Pounds?
It's better to just read full-time, right?
Right.
Okay. No other questions?
And this is just for employees? I don't see.
It's a...
I don't have to pay them. I see there's a pay rate, but that's explained. We pay for these periods, the way I agree. And then they pay on my...
Because they want to have the hand, and so they have insurance, they have to pay different.
Individuals that get any kind of claims today.
If you want to do a talking thing for the same date?
Yeah. Yeah. It is a resolution also for the angle of improvement. The section 380-5 is...
All right. I'll make a motion to set a public hearing on July 1st.
Set the number?
Set the, uh, yeah, seven, well, you'll do seven PM.
July 1st, I agree.
Section 380-5, chapter 3. So...
All the favors, all the pones?
The, I guess, number seven, that's basically to use the credit condition?
Or as to accept credit.
To accept credit?
Probably a glory test.
Yeah, sure, we test, I suppose, what we want.
Have they been charging to keep it as general, I guess?
Okay. We had talked about it once before. Anyone make a resolution on that?
I'll make the resolution.
Second?
All the favors?
All right.
Pones?
And number eight?
It's the draft environmental tax statement. It's also available online, I'm not sure, I think I sent you the username and password, but...
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Essentially, yeah, we're setting a resolution that's set in a public hearing for June 26th to hear comments on the environmental tax statements, as well as the zoning regulation. Just by, if you're just accepting a draft environmental tax statement, so after that, public, as well as you can make any comments on it, ask for changes, and then apply all the environmental tax statements. It then has to be debated and accepted after a 30-day written comment period, so starting from when you accept this statement. So I think our plan right now is to have the board accept, apply environmental tax statement, and all the comments we make by the end of July, and then to send everything out to the county, and get it back by, because the county has a 30-day process as well. So at the end of August, hopefully, we can be the target date so far on that.
And we're setting it up for a fourth Wednesday of the month, right, the night of the session?
Yeah. It's actually a public hearing, but yeah, 5:00 PM at, on June 26th, right here.
And here?
It would be here, yes.
Okay.
And just moving to...
Okay. Just so everybody knows, I've been meeting with Mr. Tom Fox, and I'll, the whole program's on a schedule? My question?
Everything that's on that questionnaire, that's what you need to print it out.
Okay. I'll send everybody a copy of it to, just send it over. You'll probably get it tonight, we can, okay, I want to get it on as quick as possible. And it has a closing date on, I believe, of July 30th, was it? Yes, July 30th. I'm sorry, July 20th. And you could actually drop them off at different locations. We put Village Row, Eddie Bantry, Dick's Bacon, Bay Tackle, and basically Beach Property Owners, but...
Is that just a questionnaire?
It's just a questionnaire.
Okay.
We had a couple complaints about the streetlights in town. I got with Bruce Crower the other day. The problem they have is with the contractor that put them in, they use straight bolts in the ground, and you lean on it, it's falling out, so it can actually redo it with an L-type bolt that actually secures itself to the cement. Another complaint was the lighthouse was out, the lighthouse is now open running again, it's a simple fuse. And also mentioned to him that the lights on the road should be brighter than what they are, so he's also looking about changing the LED lights.
And the cars will be straight?
The what?
The roads will be straight?
The fall will be straight when they're done. I can't look at their straight, they're spaced out.
And...
We have one more.
Yeah. The resolution to set a public hearing to add penalty provisions for, I guess, on hidden, stolen, scamming.
We did that. What are you going to do? We passed the resolution to hire that company. To hire?
That's a resolution to...
Okay.
So we just need to set the public hearing, this is...
July 9th?
It's 18, I think, coming up. But it's...
You're thinking about Dennis Farrell?
Yes.
You go ahead, and we have to put in that poll. Do you think on July 9th, we should start at 6:00? When is Duncan Norris coming?
I thought that was...
June?
That's true.
It's coming up this Tuesday?
Yeah.
The public hearing, that'd be here?
Uh, well, that means...
Oh, that's all right, we have the... Rest in the seventh one?
The other thing, most of the board members, the way I made yesterday, Suffolk County legislators had approved the revitalization of Smith Boy Dunes. There was some chatter about Congressman Bishop getting the okay for the funding, but as of now, he hasn't called me back to act with the firm. But still doesn't mean that we're going to get the dunes restored real quick. They're actually looking into August, September, availability of the dredger. The dredger's probably going to come to the state, so it's...
Since they know the little, they're using it on by August, can't they have the dredger sitting here?
Well, the dredgers, from what we were told, the dredgers are in demand right now. So, you know, we could actually go through hurricane season with what we have.
Really?
We started hurricane season too first. A couple of us thought at the legislative committee meeting last week, and needless to say, they forgot to tell us about the meeting yesterday. I actually got texts from Jonathan from the analyst company, who attended the meeting yesterday and spoke on behalf of the church. So, it was passing, no problem, the problem is just getting the dredger.
Now, that was just the one that Kate Brownie told.
Correct.
That basically, all it's doing is saying, number one, to expedite the work, and then get monthly reports.
Yes.
I mean, the expedite, that ship sailed a long time ago, seven months ago.
Yes.
But there was no money appropriated or anything like that.
Well, no. Remember, the work session, the biggest problem was the county don't have the money, they wait for the federal government.
And they think that, you know, there's likely just the federal government.
That's the...
The federal government. I'll be co-acting there for the federal government. And you said it was...
Yeah, along the shore, a little bit.
Exactly.
Squad here, and I'm just writing down the directions.
Also, everybody got a copy of these flyers? This is from United Way. I have them coming to the meeting next week. I told them I would give them 15 minutes in the beginning of the meeting to explain to everybody what's going on, and what's there, what they have to offer them, and then we'll set them up in the back of the booth to debate, whatever you want to do. The biggest problem I have is, we have super, we have Robert Hahn Foundation money available, we have the United Way money available, it's just money available for people, and people just, they're not knocking the door down to hit this money. So, if anybody knows of anybody...
Who's the audience? Anybody knows anybody that needs help?
Help to come to the meeting on Tuesday. And that includes as far as free air sealing of the house, free installation of phone, which we know phone works very well in some people's houses, free health and safety checks on your house, there's a whole bunch of stuff they have to offer, so if anybody knows of anybody, please encourage them to come to the meeting.
There's no guarantee it'll be free.
It depends, it comes on you.
Depends on qualification, but they're going to help make houses much more energy efficient. They're going to save you money. And they promised me that if you do it to pay them, it's going to pay for itself. So, it's a win-win.
And if anybody does a lot of TV watching, the governor is advertising, we're a couple of actors, Whoopi Goldberg is doing it, Fenero, that we are going to build bigger and better, we are not going to run, we are going to rebuild, so despite all the rumors that are going around saying that somebody's looking to buy up the properties, as of right now, nobody's looking to buy up any properties.
Actually, I've been told that the whole idea of buying a house here and a house there's absolutely not acceptable, not going to happen. If they can't buy up an entire tract of land, the county's not buying property, because they have to get approval for it. Buying one house here...
There are literally hundreds of standalone parcels that they still have on their acquisition list. So they're not, that's not entirely true, that they want individual houses to turn your list.
I thought it came down, the county wasn't buying any houses, it's going to be the state.
It's going to be the state versus village.
Yeah. So that girl, Lisa Sacramento, I think her name is, the county is out of the business of buying it.
Right.
The state was buying, and according to Lee Donner's office, they are now out of it, so, but we'll see.
But we're all looking for investors, that if somebody wants to sell, we'd like to see the homes rebuilt bigger and better.
Things change very rapidly with the resolution. There's a good statistic in today from SBA, Nicole, she was supposed to show up and talk with us today. She is representing the Horizon.
Yes.
And she is going around the village right now, meeting with people. I met with them, and they're giving out $100,000 grants, and they're giving out also 1% more.
To help raise taxes.
To help do any...
But they're...
Well, mitigation is only 20%.
20%, well, it's complicated. It gets a whole formula. But they're assigning caseworkers to homeowners, and right now, they have assigned the caseworkers. This goes waiting in line for caseworkers, and they will be working individually.
Well, she's caseworker.
She's...
She has a maid.
Yeah, but we haven't gotten our caseworker, they miss anyone else's work.
Okay.
Yep, but your business, that's why homeowners have not gotten it yet. But we are on home list, and the money's been allocated, and hopefully, we'll start seeing some houses go up.
I don't think anybody has a folder.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah.
This is through Stony Brook now?
This is through O'Malley Rising.
Yeah, well, this is, this is another one now. Actually, there seems to be a big breakdown in communication because the Zeldin's office didn't even know about it. She just, she called me out of the group because my name had been entered in on one of the SBA sheets. So she picked it up from that, and then she's got a whole group that's working on Stony Brook to do this. And she's tremendous, so that's why I invited her here.
Give me her contact information.
Well, she may come to.
If she shows up, that would be great.
She'll meet Tuesday. I'll make sure she's there.
Okay. Because we need to, we need to connect with these people. There's this, this break between what they're offering and what we're getting.
And we have Lake Rose, talking about doing a thing for people in Arctic Beach. But that is not.
Can we revisit that fact there?
Yeah, I have a memo drafted to, and I can send it over to, I have Brian research the issue. I mean, the law is in our vision unconstitutional.
I never heard of that in court.
I, well, that's the case law, I didn't see any federal or state.
If you buy a house in a village, you have to live in it for five years before you can get a rental permit. Can't buy it for rental, because it eliminates some of the. Yeah, and then force them.
No, I mean, I would say it's, it's pretty easy for any landlord or tenant to challenge a law in anybody, to be honest. I'm not saying like, like, the United States about, you know, the idea of laws, that seems like 70/30, because it's just much, much stricter regulations and laws that are struck down. Discrimatory effect that they have. And that, that would be a really tough law to fight for.
Do you know, but that's under that law that.
Yeah, it's in, it's in their, at a particular section, I'll, I'll send a memo, it's sort of been extracted, this is about six months ago.
Based on that, what is the amount then to charge for it?
Well, that's something you can kind of raise the fees, try to.
Disregard.
Right, discourages the worst. People just come in, try to make a quick buck without investing in the property. You do have to relate the fees and your charging to the services that you provide before, what's to pay for, so if someone pays rental fees, you kind of have to justify the cost of having a building inspector go there to inspect the property, the cost of enforcing the building code. And if it looks like the fees are generating revenues that are playing excess of what the cost to enforce the code, then the court's going to look at it as a tax. But there's little room there, and then we can come. Justify that, the cost of enforcement. But the, the total liability of law, and the effect of that, you know, it's, looking at the case law, I mean, there's cases where simply literally multifamily housing in certain cities and villages and municipalities, and how the town might exactly, this 20% loss in cases. Certain provisions, and municipalities get killed on those, just, you know, creating zoning codes that don't provide a sufficient multifamily housing to discriminate against people with disabilities. Borrowing, methadone clinics, or housing for, you know, unhappily houses. Unfortunately, those things always, those regulations always get struck down. So, I mean, it's something you could pass, I'm just giving you.
Is there anything where, whether it's a town, county, village, whatever it is, where a certain percentage of the houses in your area can live and rent it?
Yeah, I mean, it comes under the same exact thing. I mean, the Federal Housing Act was basically created about 20 years ago, they added these additional provisions. It's basically the way it was interpreted. If you're, if you're creating this percentage of houses that can be rented, what's going to happen is, you know, if they're subject to the challenge of court, they're going to bring landlords and tenants in, maybe some sort of class action suit. And they're going to argue that, and they'll show statistics showing that specifically people of lower income and also people of certain racial and ethnic backgrounds are less likely to reside in a village as a result of that policy. They need to show the differences in the numbers, they're going to probably, in that case.
All right, is there anything else?
Last time I met, we wrote an agreement with the property owners about they were trying to modify it. They haven't signed off on it?
No, they haven't signed off yet.
Wasn't that basically the common ground that they request?
Yes.
And they just didn't sign off on it, so I guess the village isn't going on, it's on one.
Well, the villagers, they're still doing their work on it, yeah.
Without signing off on it?
Without signing off on the agreement. It's, there's a couple of issues that Timmy's taking care of right now, so. It's, I don't know, it's just a matter of they want to do what they want to do. We got to do what we got to do, that's basically what I told them last week. What I think we need to do is we need to wrap the letter around, because, and get it over to the newspaper, because they put a newspaper, a letter in the newspaper blaming us for everything that's happening.
And that's why I'm bringing this up, because of that letter. And we signed off on an agreement that they asked us to do so they could expedite their work, and now they're not signing off on that letter. There's some way now we can remove that letter, because I'll tell you, they're not going to do.
Well, the letter is out of the picture right now.
It's out of the picture.
Yeah, they're not, they're not signing it. Also, I sent, I don't know if Debbie did also, I sent two things that we got from Deborah.
The gas station?
Yes. What I'm doing is I'm talking to the owners of the gas station to see if, the next day or two, see if they want to do something like that.
It's a grant program.
It's a grant program.
So I'll need someone helping write it.
Exactly, we're probably going to have to work with them, because talking to one right now, he has no idea what we're talking about.
Right.
It's definitely beneficial to the community.
Absolutely. And any application for the educational recycling? I sent that to you. Something that we just need to get the, to get it filled out, sent in? It's done already, okay, so. We, what happens, it may take a month, a year, whatever it is, it is. Years. But it's out there. All right, anybody got anything else?
Just one thing on recycling, Devin, was, we came in town now, went to, on their recycling day, everything goes out at once now. Does that, do you know if that was what they got from that grant?
Not, not familiar with that. What was, what was submitted was for an educational program.
Yes.
And the timeframe's for DEC, which funds this, a pre-appreciation, several years before an application. And then there's their educational programs or capital programs, which can be a variety of things, I can forward that to you later.
All right, a second letter's been sent out to Suffolk County, it reflects student buses. The first one was sent out maybe about six, eight months ago, I guess they totally ignored it. The second one, they just went out, just a couple of weeks ago. And we're receiving a lot of complaints, basically, buses speeding. Going up and down these small roads with one or two people on it, so we're just trying to.
Keep them on the main streets, get them off the side street. In fact, they used to go up Lake Crest of Whittier, the other day they went over Peaker, which is quite a few streets up, and they're flying. Through these narrow streets, kids will be out of school soon, somebody has to do something, don't they?
Well, we'll give them another week, two to answer this if that thing will have to pay them.
It's just a waste of gas, there's no way to buy buses. It doesn't even make sense. If you're earning the money, you can save money right there.
I believe that has to be changed by the law of legislation.
Probably.
Well, funny enough, when we were at the legislative committee meeting, there was something, there was something on it to raise the bus fees.
Yeah.
That's the handicap, that's the handicap.
Uh, no, Suffolk County.
No, Suffolk County, but it's the ones that come right to your home?
No, 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 this was the regular transportation bus.
I feel I read that, the ones that do the individual, it's Suffolk County Bus Services. If you're handicapped, that's why there's really no need for the buses up and down side street. Because if you have a handicap, they come right to your home.
They don't wait till some people is filled, and then they'll check those, you can't, it won't. It's, it's absolutely dangerous and unnecessary, as a justice.
All right, if nobody has nothing else? You guys want to go to exec session?
War?
War?
Law, personnel?
Legal. Okay. Make a motion to go to exec session for personnel legal.